Good evening, everyone.
Yes.
We're gonna get started. Welcome to the November Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local newspapers on November 7, 2019. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believe that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that you make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on board docs which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible of liberty and justice for all.
Can we take the roll call, please?
Ms. Cannamatory?
Here.
Ms. Delara?
Here.
Mr. Delator?
Here.
Ms. Evans? Ms. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Clubfield?
Here.
Ms. McGurk?
Here.
Mr. Carrion?
Here.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
You have a quarrel.
Okay, we're first gonna start with the superintendent's report, so I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening. So, we'll begin the evening with the superintendent's report like we do at each meeting. Is that updated? It's loading? Okay, so, there are a few updates that I would like to share with the board and the community, but tonight we have many students that we are going to be recognizing this evening, not only for student of the month recognitions, but also some students who have excelled in a essay contest and are going to be set to compete nationally in the essay contests, so I'll try to keep my remarks as short and brief as possible. So, marking period one is just about at a close. It ends on November 14th. Report cards are going out on November 20th. We send hard copy report cards out, kindergarten through 5th grade, 6th grade through 12th grade. They are distributed digitally via Genesis, however, any family in grades 6 through 12 that would like a hard copy, all they have to do is contact the guidance counselor or the main office, and a hard copy report card will be provided. Just the same, any family in grades K through 5 that would like to just simply access the report card via Genesis, they may do that as well. The district achievement scores, so each of our schools presented out to their school communities on November 7th, and a district summary was presented to the board committee on November 7th as well. For parents who are interested in an extremely comprehensive presentation of student achievement scores, you may visit the district website at www.hoboken.k12 nj.us and follow the tab for curriculum and district-wide testing, and you will actually see, you will actually see two columns of testing reports. One column is for achievement and growth summaries, and it's for the district and each of the schools. The other column is actually comparative data, so you can look at those scores as well for both the district and each of our schools. The next slide just simply shows the New Jersey CUSAC District Performance Review Totals. One ahead, sorry. We, every few years, the public schools in New Jersey go through a monitoring process. That monitoring process is called CUSAC. For those of you who have been following the district and the Board of Education, the Hoboken Public Schools have gone through CUSAC reviews over and over based on the fact that one or two of the topics in the New Jersey CUSAC categories did not hit the 80 mark. Last spring, I think you recall, the district had surpassed the 80 mark, 80-point mark in each of the categories for what they call DPRs, and as a result of that, the district moved into what the New Jersey Department of Education deems high-performing status. We once again had to go through a self-assessment in the DPR categories and Personnel, Instruction and Program, Governance, Fiscal, and Operations. So, with that self-assessment, we do a complete self-assessment in all of the categories except Instruction and Program. We've completed the self-assessment. In Instruction and Program, the New Jersey Department of Education pre-populates the scores, so that is not necessarily a self-assessment. It's kind of a combination of what is input by the Department of Education as well as a few categories of self-assessment. So, as a result of that, the scores that we're submitting to both the Board of Education for approval on the DPRs as well as to the New Jersey Department of Education by November 15th are those that you see behind me on the screen. We will be visited by the county office for this process on May 28, 2020, and with that being said, if the county agrees with the self-assessment scores in the areas of Personnel, Governance, Fiscal, and Operations, we will once again be deemed a high-performing district in the state of New Jersey. So, some good news, the middle school, Hoboken Middle School, will be hosting its first musical. Everyone knows that the Hoboken High School kind of facilitates the district-wide musical every spring. This is the first year that the middle school will actually be performing its own musical. They will be doing Susacol Junior. The dates for the show are November 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, and tickets can be purchased on booktix.com. You can actually get the link off of our district website, and also, it's been published in my weekly Herald for the last few weeks. Coming soon, so this is something that I would like to report out to the board, and for those who are also interested in this, I've been working very closely with Dr. Abraham and Mr. Arno and Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, our Assistant Superintendent, on redesigning the middle school schedule as well as the layout of classrooms in the middle school. One of the reasons that we are looking to do this is, number one, to cut down on transitions between classes, to increase instructional time, to enhance communication and relationships between and among students, but as well between and among faculty members and parents. Also, to ensure that we can kind of lay out a system where our grade levels are separated, where there would be a 6th grade floor, 7th grade floor, and 8th grade floor with lockers being dedicated on each floor, and a dedicated standalone 6th grade lunch. We've been able to complete the schedule. It looks like it works perfectly. The big change in the schedule will be the shift from junior PGP in the middle of the day to period 9, which gives us dedicated lunch periods, and it also gives us the opportunity to re-block the class time that the kids had last year with science and math and social studies and language arts literacy, giving us more instructional time in the classroom. One of the things that we are definitely finding is that the switching of classes with the kids between periods is a lot at a middle school level, so as a result of that, we're looking to reduce that, and one of the things that has to happen is you have to kind of adjust and monitor and adjust and then readjust. So, that is something that we are working to finalize, and those new schedules will be shared with the staff, with parents at a meeting on November 19th, which Dr. Abraham will put out to the parental community, and then will be rolled out on November 25th. And so, with that being said, in order to make that happen, we will open up some additional small group instruction space on the second floor of this building, and that small group instruction space will be made possible by many of the central offices that are located in Demarest being relocated to another building. So, more will follow when it comes to the middle school schedule, but I'll leave that to the principal, Dr. Abraham, to talk more about when he holds his meetings with staff and the parent community. So, high school winter sports are set to begin, and there are a couple things that I'm really excited about. Both boys and girls basketball are, you know, in the process of getting underway, boys and girls swimming, boys and girls track, boys and girls bowling, and this year, it is possible that we are going to have enough cheerleaders for a winter cheer squad. I don't know if anyone recalls seeing the size of the cheerleading squad at the winter football games, huge. A lot of students participated, so we're hoping that that enthusiasm carries over into the winter season as well. And for the first time, we will be offering boys and girls wrestling. Boys and girls wrestling, wrestling is a coed opportunity at the NJSIAA level, and we have had a number of students inquire about wrestling over the last couple years, and this will be the first year we will be moving into a small, kind of JV competitive season until our kids are ready to compete at a varsity level. We have a number of community service events and efforts that our students are undertaking in each of our schools, so in each of the editions of the Herald as well as on Facebook and on Twitter, you'll see over and over and over again that there are postings for Thanksgiving food drives and coat drives and hats and glove drives. We also have non-parishable items that are being collected for the Hoboken Homeless Shelter, so all of these things, keep your eyes open because any assistance and help is greatly appreciated. We also have at the elementary school level, our students participating in all of our schools now in the Crayola Color Cycle It effort to reduce waste in our landfills, so each of the elementary schools are collecting used markers. If anyone's interested, there's boxes in each of the schools for this effort. For the last couple years, there is a group of very dedicated individuals who have been hosting community dinners each month in the community room in the Hoboken Housing Authority, and as a result of that wonderful effort, Hoboken High School, the principal, Ms. Picapea Pietra, and her staff have decided to become a part of that community dinner, you know, the festivities that are associated with that. And so, last year, they hosted the first high school outreach community dinner, and they will be hosting a second community dinner. Robin, what's the date on that one? No, November 20th at 5 o'clock in the high school cafeteria. Be sure to come. Everyone is invited from the community, and we're excited to welcome as many people into Hoboken High School as possible. At this time, I'd just like to congratulate a few of our students. I'd like to congratulate Sheila Lamb on her acceptance to the Art Harper Academy at Stevens Institute of Technology. She was accepted, she applied and was accepted to the Saturday Academy, so she will be attending Stevens every Saturday for a number of weeks until the end of the school year. I'd also like to congratulate Jihad McCall and Faith Stephens for being selected New Jersey Rising Scholars in the recognition program, so we're very excited for both of them. Naijan Freeman and Justin Vasquez for being named Jets Upstanders of the Week. I'd also like to kind of congratulate collectively the Hoboken High School AP Computer Science students who have decided to dedicate their time to participate and learn and extend their learning at Codenum, which is an organization, a business in the Monroe Center, phenomenal organization that teaches students coding from A to Z and has a very, very, very high success rate working with students that are preparing for the Advanced Placement Computer Science exam. So, we have a small group of dedicated students that will be going to Codenum under the supervision and assistance of our vice principal, Ms. Anna Gallo, and participating in preparation work from now until the time they take the Computer Science Advanced Placement exam. And then, lastly, I will let Dr. Abraham do this after his recognition of the Students of the Month, but tonight we will be recognizing all students who placed either a first place, second place, or honorable mention in the See America in Color Essay Contest. Each of these students are going to be participating in the national competition at this point. And then, lastly, which is not on this presentation, but it's something that I would like the board to know, there are a group of faculty members that will be attending on Wednesday night a session on the homicide legislation presented by Dr. Stephanie Harris. It's Wednesday evening, it's being facilitated by the National Association, the New Jersey Association of Black Educators, so we have a team of staff members that are going to be attending to learn a little bit more about the resources that are available, and also to discuss the ways in which our district is implementing the curriculum itself. So, we're happy and we're excited about that. So, at this time, what I would like to do is turn over the presentation to Ms. Rodriguez Gomez for all of our Students of the Month.
All right, thank you, Dr. Johnson. Good evening, members of our esteemed Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, families, and of course, the most important friends in the room, the students. At this time, we will celebrate our students in all of our schools who have done their very best to show us their very best. We will begin with Joseph F. Brandt and Principal Bartlett. He will celebrate his selection. I'd ask that folks remain back so I can take some pictures. I'll certainly send those out to the principal, and he can share those with family. He will then, after the pictures, introduce the Connors principal, Ms. Juliana Addy, and she will follow the pattern, introducing our next presenter, so on and so forth. Finally, as Dr. Johnson has shared, our middle school principal, Dr. Abraham, will be also celebrating, will also be sharing the special award presentation when it is his term at the podium. Okay? Principal Bartlett?
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez, and at this time, I would like to ask Raphael Kim to join me at the podium. Congratulations to Raphael Kim, the Joseph F. Brandt School Student of the Month for October 2019. Raphael was nominated by Ms. Lucignano primarily because he is, quote, "the quintessential fourth-grade student." Ms. L. said Raphael is "practical, systematic, self-motivated, and well-developed socially, emotionally, and cognitively." While he is competitive in and out of the classroom, he is usually low-key engaged and focused on his own work. He is individualistic, yet enjoys socializing and working in groups. He has a sound and rapidly advancing vocabulary and is getting better at memorizing facts and details. He is always conscientious about his work, taking it upon himself to become immersed in it without distraction. His strong listening and speaking skills are evident as he is inquisitive. He is a strong, reasonable contributor to our classroom conversations. As principal, I can't help but echo Ms. Lucignano's words. Raphael is a model student citizen, approaching each day with a seriousness of purpose, but at the same time having fun while he engages with his work academically and socially with his peers. Previously, Raph was honored as the Brandt School Student of the Month as a kindergartner. He was also nominated as a Student of the Month in 2nd grade as well as in 3rd grade. He has been consistently recognized for his kindness in the classroom. Raphael is an asset to our school as he has been an exemplary student since early childhood. He offers help and support to all students in need regardless of whether they are his direct classmates or appear with whom he shares lunch, recess, or any other shared space. Through observation of his behavior and academics, students are learning just what it takes to achieve greatness one small step at a time. When he's not spending time with his 2nd grade brother Mateo, Raphael plays chess and soccer. He particularly likes science and learning language arts skills. He also enjoys art class as well as phys ed. Raph is now involved in the instrumental music program at Brandt as he is learning how to play the violin. Truly, we have a Renaissance man in our midst. As far as the future goes, Raphael has no idea about what college he wants to attend, but he is hoping that he will develop a better sense of what he'd like to do as he learns just what options can and will be made available to him. Raphael said the following upon finding out he would receive this honor. "It feels good to be recognized for being the overall Student of the Month. I would remind kids to remember that you have to put in time and effort to achieve success. If you want something, you can't expect to just get it if you don't work at it." Congratulations to Raphael Kim, the Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for October 2019. At this time, I would like to introduce the principal of the Thomas G. Connors Elementary School, Ms. Juliana Addy.
So, going to be introducing both our September Student of the Month and our October Student of the Month. So, first, we're gonna start off with September for Alexandra Knapp. Come on up. I want to draw lots of attention. And we could do it together. Okay, you ready? It's okay, it's okay. Okay. Alexandra is our Connors 1st grader who's been awarded our Connors Student of the Month for September 2019. She was nominated by her teacher, Mrs. Sheridan. Mrs. Sheridan says that it has been an absolute pleasure getting to know Alex as a student. She has acclimated to 1st grade seamlessly. Alex has enjoyed making new friends while also impressing her teacher by following classroom rules and working well throughout the day. She also says that Alex adds to the positive character of the classroom by always being ready to lend a helping hand to her peers. Alex truly portrays the meaning of playing fair and having fun while learning and working in centers. Alex is a kind and caring student who brightens everyone's day with her proud sunny smile. Alex is such an enthusiastic student who is always ready to start the day with her wonderful participation and eagerness to learn new things. Alex enjoys completing our message write-ups first thing in the morning upon arrival. Alex is a great friend to all her classmates. She comes to school every day with a big smile on her face. She exhibits kindness and respect to all of her peers. She's a model Connors student. Alex has already shown growth and improvement even in the first month of school of September. She challenges herself by expanding on her writing and taking pride in her work. Alex is an asset to Connors Elementary School. She's a leader to our younger students and her classmates. She's a wonderful, kind classmate who actively listens and follows directions. She believes in all our classroom do's. Her favorite one being, we do have fun. Because, because we are having fun in school. She always has a smile for her peers and her teachers, ready to start the day with her backpack on arrival time. Alex is very organized, even sharing with Mrs. Sheridan that she enjoys planning out her school outfits for the week, a true 1st grade fashionista. Alex, her mom, and sister like to take her scooter to school. She likes to play soccer. Her dad is the assistant coach. She enjoys taking the passport class called Investigating the World. She loves going out to dinner with her family on the weekends. Her favorite subject is science. Alex wants to be an artist when she grows up because she loves to paint, color, and draw. We asked Alex how she felt about receiving the honor roll recognition. She said that she was excited because she didn't realize that she was the Student of the Month for the entire school. We are so proud of you, Alex. Now, for October, we have Erin Bishop. You wanna come up? Our Connors October Student of the Month is Erin Bishop from Mrs. Janus' 3rd grade class. Erin has demonstrated extraordinary behavior earning him Student of the Month. Erin proves how dedicated he is to his academics every day in school by working hard, staying focused, and persevering. Erin goes above and beyond to show respect and kindness to everyone that he meets. Ms. Janus says that Erin is a role model to his peers and brightens Connors School with his positive attitude and kind spirit. Erin has accomplished many amazing things so far in 3rd grade. He demonstrates the class trait of the month, teamwork, earning him multiple shout-outs weekly for helping others with difficult math word problems and being a polite and kind friend during recess. Erin works diligently throughout the day to master his multiplication facts, already mastering more than half of them in order to prepare himself for the challenging work that lies ahead in 3rd grade. He loves playing math games in the classroom to challenge his brain and his peers as well. Every day, Erin brightens everyone's day with his positive attitude and happy smile. Erin is an asset to Connors Elementary School. Erin demonstrates the Connors values every time he steps into school. His ability to be prepared and ready to listen every day allows him to serve as a fantastic role model for the other students in 3rd grade. Erin also serves as a role model for the younger students at Connors by showing respect to everyone and always doing the right thing. Erin's favorite subject in school are math, science, and gym. He likes to play basketball and video games outside his school with his family and friends. One day, he wants to attend Villanova University. One day, he wants to attend Villanova University to play basketball, after which he would like to become a professional basketball player or a Youtuber. We asked Erin what he loves most about Connors, and he says, "I love Connors School because the teachers helped me learn." We are so proud to have you, Erin, represent Connors Elementary School as Student of the Month for October.
At this time, I would like to call Austin Terrell to the podium as the Wallace School Student of the Month for October. Austin was nominated by his fourth-grade teacher, Ms. Reedy, for going above and beyond the expectations set forth by the Hoboken Board of Education and our Wallace School community. Austin consistently strives to help others, encourage others to do their best, and inspires others to feel their best. Austin has a great work ethic, always trying his best in school and especially with projects. He seeks out how to include others at playtime, at recess, and in class activities. He is a great friend to all the kids in the class and has earned the respect of his classmates by speaking respectfully with them, showing empathy and kindness. Austin is a very creative, smart, and enthusiastic learner who finds joy in learning and exploring new areas of study. His enthusiasm is a torch in the classroom, leading others to the joy of learning. As the principal of Wallace, I always appreciate students who find ways to lift their peers up in a positive manner. Austin is that student. He always has a positive attitude and continues to show respect and positivity. I am proud to have him as our Student of the Month. When asked why Austin should be nominated, Ms. Reedy stated, "Austin was on my mind for nomination as Student of the Month when he came to me privately to recommend that perhaps another child should be honored with something like Student of the Month because of how hard they are working. The sincerity in his voice cemented my previous thoughts. He embodies what I look for in a student, thinking of others, doing his best, and giving it his all, all with a wonderful grin on his face." Austin enjoys school but also loves to play sports such as baseball, football, and basketball. His big heart is matched by his big love for all things sports. From what I've learned, Austin is the true embodiment of good sportsmanship on the field as well, always there to encourage a teammate who may or may not have had their best moment that day, saying, "It's okay, you did a good job. I strike out too," or "Way to go, that was a great effort." Austin loves adventure, reading, and learning about the big wide world around him. One example of this is when he creates extra projects at home to add to his school-based social studies projects. We know Austin will go far in life, whatever his goal may be, wherever his creative spirit and drive take him, and we know he will make this world a better place, one encouraging word at a time. By the way, when Ms. Reedy told another teacher she was nominating Austin, the teacher replied, "Austin's a rock star." I thought that hit the nail on the head. Congratulations, Austin, for being nominated Student of the Month for Wallace Elementary School. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Abraham, the Hoboken Middle School Principal.
At this time, I would like to call to the podium Hoboken Middle School Student of the Ryan Belluma was recommended for Hoboken Middle School's October Student of the Month Award by the entire Grade Eight faculty. Staff noted that Ryan approaches each class with anticipation and excitement. He constantly asks his teachers and those around him, "Is there anything I can do to help?" Ryan's display of kindness is uplifting and adds positivity to every classroom he enters. It's a pleasure to award Ryan Belluma with the October Student of the Month Award for Hoboken Middle School. Ryan is hardworking, diligent, and enthusiastic in everything he does. He serves as a role model for students in all grade levels at HMS. Ryan takes pride in being well-rounded and demonstrates outstanding commitment to both his academics and athletics. Ryan greatly enjoys PGP, where he takes part in Environmental Crusaders, Robotics and Engineering, and Makerspace and Design. He enjoys critical thinking and complex problem-solving. Using these very traits, Ryan was part of the Grade Eight Steam Tank Team that advanced to the state competition in Atlantic City, New Jersey. His team, titled Bag in a Box, presented their creative idea for reducing plastic waste in the Hoboken community. Judges from the U.S. Army complimented Ryan and the team on their extraordinary idea and encouraged them to reach out to local legislature. Ryan is a huge fan of the New York Knicks, which says a lot about his character. He stated, "We all face adversity. I like to be the person that overcomes it and helps others to do the same." As a student that has already overcome quite a bit of adversity himself, Ryan continues to make us proud each and every day. There is nobody more deserving of this recognition. Congratulations, Ryan Belluma. At this time, I'm excited to announce the winners for the See America in Color Essay Contest. Hoboken Middle School students had the opportunity to participate in the See America in Color Essay Contest. The contest theme was to reach higher for a better nation. The theme draws on the civic ideas of John F. Kennedy and the social justice efforts of Martin Luther King Jr. Our district essay committee consisted of Dr. Pollins, myself, and Ms. Tara Donnelly. The committee was excited to read the submissions and were proud to announce the following two students who have had their essays forwarded to the regional competition to represent Hoboken public schools. I'd like to introduce, first place, Josaida Yorkiaga. Josaida is going to stand here beside me as we recognize the following students who are also incredibly, incredibly impressive in their work and did a fantastic job. These students were selected out of 400 students and 400 submissions from our school. In second place, I would like to recognize Alexis Sayan. We would also like to announce three students who received an honorable mention for their hard work and dedication towards this assignment. The first student for honorable mention, Genevieve Fink. Our second student for honorable mention, Ryan Belluma. And last, but certainly not least, Alana Rivas. Alana could not be here with us this evening, but she'll be receiving her certificate in school tomorrow. Let's please give these students a big round of applause. At this time, I would like to call to the podium Principal of Hoboken High School, Ms. Pica Pietra.
I have Ms. Mara with me because I might need a little emotional support for my speech. I am so proud to announce the Hoboken High School October Student of the Month, Bianca I am so proud of her, is what I keep hearing when Rosie's name comes up. Every now and again, you come across a student that you realize has the potential before they do. Rosie is one of these young ladies. I have had the pleasure of working with Rosie close to five years now, as she is in her junior year, and she came to us. What I have witnessed is her coming into her own. She knew what she wanted, she put a plan in place, and she has not looked back. Rosie is quiet. You might not even know when she is in the room because she is so mild-mannered. During PGP, I see her sitting in the hallway with lunch and a book, either reading or doing her math homework. I often say, "Go sit in the library," but Rosie is very happy in her spot. Over the years, Rosie put off this rough exterior, but she is one of the most sensitive people I know. Never afraid to show her emotions, you know exactly how she feels by just looking at her face. And do not get me started on her beautiful smile. She can light up a room. Ms. Dinni said that Rosie loves playing football with the boys during PE class. I imagine that is why the class of 2021 beat the class of 2020 in the Powderpuff Game. Ms. Amin shared that she walked into my class in September and said, "I have changed Mrs. Amin," and she was true to her word. I remind her every morning when I walk in the building and see her that I am so pleased with her work. Mrs. D'Amico has had Rosie for years. Unlike many students, she has struggled in math, mostly because of a fixed mindset. Well, this year, she has above a 90% in Algebra II. She has been persistent, motivated, and focused. She participates in class and completes all of her work, asking questions when needed. She is quite inquisitive. Rosie is a pleasure. Mr. Wanko said sometimes she seeks him out in the cafeteria during his lunch duty to have a discussion about a topic they covered in class that day. She's a member of the R Club and a three-sport athlete, playing volleyball, basketball, and softball. Rosie wants to study visual arts at Rutgers or NJCU, but we are lucky to keep her for one more year. One of her biggest champions is Coach R, and I wanted to share what she wrote about Rosie as it is what everyone else is saying. This is all from Ms. Har Ruskowski. Rosie came to me freshman year, interested in playing basketball, but had some obstacles to overcome first. I told her as a student athlete, she not only would be a representative of Hoboken High School, but a reflection of Coach Sorafin and myself. I explained that we expected hard work both on and off the court, including good grades, respect for staff and peers, and a dedicated desire to succeed. I told her we would be there to guide her, but couldn't do it for her. This wasn't an easy road for Rosie to navigate, but slowly she figured out how to stay on the right path. I watched her attitude towards school and sports change with each passing month. I was lucky enough to have her in my English 10 class where I was able to keep an eye on her and make sure she stayed the course. Rosie was on time, prepared for classes, participated in lessons, and began to see the rewards of her work. She put in time, work, and dedication needed to reach her goals of doing well in school and playing basketball. Rosie is a different kid than the one who walked through the doors of Hoboken High School that first year. That girl never would have believed she could be Hoboken High School Student of the Month one day. Today, Rosie is more confident, more outgoing, and more driven than ever. She smiles every day because she is proud of the young lady she has become. She is proud of the work she has put in and the goals she has achieved. Rosie is finally realizing what we all knew all along, that she's a great kid with a great heart who will succeed at anything she puts her mind and heart into. She is charismatic, intelligent, sensitive, and so very lovable. We are thrilled to give her this award as she is a role model for our students. When notified about the award, Rosie said, "I'm proud of myself," and she couldn't stop smiling. Congratulations, Rosie.
I think we all have tears in our eyes up here after the last one, but we're so very proud of each and every one of you, and thank you to Dr. Johnson for that wonderful update. We are now going to take a few-minute break so that anyone who needs to leave can leave, and then we'll continue on with the business portion of our meeting. So we'll just take a few minutes. Okay, we're going to get started. First, we'll start off, Ms. Good. Do you have a business administrator's report tonight?
No, it's the agenda.
Okay. So we'll now move on to board committee reports, curriculum and wellness, Ms. Delara.
Sure. The committee met on November 6th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Evans, Ms. Katamatory, and myself. All items on the agenda are up for approval tonight, and the agenda was forwarded to the board. And just a few things I'd like to share were that we met with Pomptonian, the president and our Hoboken manager, Pomptonian, and a few things that are coming up. Just want to make sure that everybody knows that soy milk is now being offered in all of our schools, which I'm very excited about. We also looked at the December sample menu for all the schools, and we also secured some dates for a nutrition and wellness fair. This will be happening at all of our elementary schools. It will be happening during the day, so it's going to be almost like a presentation for all of our schools. Brandt is scheduled for November 21st, Connors the 26th. I think we're still waiting on a date for Wallace. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities, Ms. Evans.
Okay, so the facilities committee met on Wednesday, November 6th. In attendance were myself, Ms. Angley, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. McGurk, and Mr. Callagie. We discussed that there is one facilities request by ZOG Sports on the agenda. The committee reviewed and recommends this item for approval. We also discussed the progress at the living classroom at Demarest, and so two tanks for turtles were delivered last week, and they're being installed this week, and the turtles, four of them, are expected to arrive shortly, if not by now. Not yet?
Arrived yet.
Okay. And then this will be followed by horshy crabs, and then the fish, which will be bass, will arrive last. We also discussed the Connors plumbing repair that was brought up at last month's meeting, and that was addressed shortly after the last meeting. And also, at Connors, guests for pre-K need to enter through the main entrance, no more being buzzed in through the side entrance. And lastly, I think it was about six... And lastly, I think it was about 65 degrees on the day we discussed this, but the heat is on at all school buildings, with all furnaces working. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Finance, Ms. Takirian.
Hi, good evening. The finance committee met on Wednesday, November 6th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Good, Ms. Angley, Mr. Delatorre, Ms. McGurk, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. A few of note or that sparked more discussion during our committee meeting are as follows. 10.07, approval of the submission of the 2020-2021 preschool education aid budget. This summarizes the budget request for next year's preschool budget. The budget anticipates continued growth in enrollment in the pre-K program. And 10.08, approval of health insurance broker of record. This is a service that has no additional fees to the district. Health insurance broker will do the following: advise the district about the healthcare market, helping the administration and board understand trends to coverage and costs, help the district evaluate plan options, advise and educate participants on available plan options, plan comparisons in coverage and costs during open enrollment and triggering life events, and advocate for the district and participants with plan providers as needed. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And Governance, Ms. Connor.
Yes. The committee met on Wednesday, November 6th at 6:00 p.m. In attendance were Ms. Angley, Ms. Takirian, Ms. Delara, and Dr. Johnson. The committee reviewed all agenda items and recommends for board approval. I would like to highlight that under 9.05, effective November 13, Ms. Lauren Ekin will fill the position of supervisor of early childhood. Congratulations.
And that's it? Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? No? Okay. Then we'll move to public comments on agenda items. Dr. Abraham, would you be able to peek to see if anyone has signed up?
No.
No? Okay. So moving on to consent agenda, is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion. Second. Yeah. So I assume you won't be talking on agenda items? Or... Okay. So there's a separate sign-up sheet for non-agenda items, which we'll do after. So you have to sign up? Yeah, right there. Okay. I'm sorry. Did we have a motion?
Yes, we had a motion and a second.
Okay. All right. Are there any items to discuss or pull? Nope? May we take the roll, please?
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
I'm going to abstain on 9.15 and yes to everything else.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Cuthfield?
I have to abstain on 10.4 and vote yes on everything else.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Takirian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Now we'll move on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. So... While you're on your way up, I just want to remind speakers of the board policy, please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation, if any. Speakers are allowed five minutes, and I'll motion at the four-minute mark.
Hi, my name is Jessica Gomez. I reside in Jersey City. Both of my kids attend Hoboken District. But I am actually here in reference to Hoboken Middle School today. And I just have some concerns in reference to... I had an incident that happened to my son last year. And I'll tell you a little bit about the incident. So it was a field day of last year, and to make a long story short, my son was rushed to the hospital. I'm a little nervous, sorry. To this day, the school has never notified me, has not reached out to apologize about anything that happened. I am concerned because there is still no nurse at the school this year, a permanent nurse. Besides that, I have had... My son was assaulted on October 22nd in his classroom. And I just honestly want to know what the procedures are for teachers in a situation where a student comes into the classroom, assaults another student. What is the teacher supposed to do? What is the correct thing for a teacher to do? Because in this incident that happened with my son, my son was in class, another student came into his classroom where she did not belong, his teacher was currently teaching the class, this student proceeded to my son's desk and hit him in the head over eight times with a closed fist. The student was suspended for one day. The teacher stood there and did nothing. So I want to know, in a situation like this, what is the teacher really supposed to do?
Unfortunately, we can't have an open dialogue, so you can share your thoughts and your feelings, and then someone will have to get back to you privately.
Okay, so that's how it is?
Well, at a public board meeting, the board can't have a...
Okay, it's my first time, so I'm not really sure.
No, that's okay.
It's my first time for this, and I'm really nervous. So I did try to talk to the principal and everything, but according to the school, the teachers are, I guess, all they have to do is make a phone call, call the dean, or... Well, that's what I was told. So I just want to clarify. That was really my question. Also, there's another situation in the school. A kid was posting inappropriate things on social media. My son was very anxious about school. Also, on Monday, I did not send him. I did receive an email from Mr. Abraham that it was a rumor. I did see the postings from this kid on his social media, so I understand maybe there is a rumor circulating the school, but it obviously came from somewhere. You know, it stemmed from his posts on social media. That post was very worrisome for me, so that's another problem that I have with the middle school that I just wanted to address as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our... Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Yolanda Johnson, and I'm an educator for the preschool. I have a son also in middle school. My situation is, I have a list that I sent to the school on people that can pick up my son in case of emergency, and one of them is my oldest son and my sister. And when an emergency happened and my son needed to go home, they told me I had to email you guys to say it's okay to pick him up. I would like to know what happened to the card that I sent back in September. They do not have homeroom teachers, so I have no clue where this information went. But the first person on the list to pick my son up in case of emergency is my oldest son and my sister. So I would like to know, like, what did they do with all this information that we sent to them in September? But I did find out that there's no homeroom teacher, so where does this stuff go to? Does anybody know?
You know what? Well, like I said to the other individual, we'll get them. Go ahead.
If you could, before the meeting is over, I'll get your contact information.
Okay.
And I'll call you first thing in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi, my name is Eileen Martinez. I have a daughter at the Hoboken Middle School. My daughter's type 1 diabetic. She's been at the Hoboken school system since kindergarten. Ever since she came into the Hoboken Middle School, there's been issues, especially this year. We started school, I understand the nurse got injured. I was never notified. I sent her to school, and I called the main office to find out, you know, how my daughter's doing. There's not a nurse here. Oh, we have a substitute, but for lunchtime. My daughter doesn't require a lunchtime nurse. She required a nurse from the morning to the end of the day. It's been going back and forth like this. Now they have three substitutes. Nobody never gets to know my daughter. Also, her 504 plan, I didn't get her 504 plan handed to me in my hands until October. I don't think that was the proper procedures to follow. And I just get the runaround, and okay, Ms. Martinez, okay, Ms. Martinez, and nobody's taking accountability for their actions. My daughter is type 1. I had to tell them where is her delegates, so when the nurse is not there, coming from another school, someone responsible and trained knows how to inject her with the glucagon, if necessary. Now they're training people. Oh, we're trained. I would like to see a paper where their names are, that this is a life-threatening situation and not to be taken lightly by the school system at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'll... That will conclude our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No. Meeting adjourned.